Mark, excuse Susan. Everyone's here and you're here as an alternate.
The Energy Commission designate the site that they prefer.
I have not seen, I have not seen a report out of there.
As a matter of record, I'm going to tell you that you put out all the stuff tonight. And I think you're critiquing my over gaveling last time. You did not put out a gavel.
Oh, I didn't, you know, with the radar.
No, it's okay. It's all good.
Oh, no, this is important.
Yeah, we need to have something to pound.
Like, just clapping is maybe sufficient?
Gavel.
It wasn't critiquing, it was an observation.
I don't usually use it very much, but I've somehow got attached to this thing last time.
Yeah, go for it.
Minutes are approved.
You got to be careful because you don't want, you know, sometimes you don't want that thing in your hand.
Everything looks like a nail.
All right. It is six thirty-one and I hereby call the planning board meeting of October twentieth, twenty twenty-two to order. Very self-conscious rap of the gavel. All right, so we'll begin by calling roll. Rebecca.
I'm here.
Phil.
Oi.
Neil.
Present.
Is oi a present?
It's a response.
Here.
Mark is excused this evening. Susan.
Here.
And alternate members, Zach of the select board. Michael Bouchard. Peter Julia and Guy. Here, here. So, given that we have one absence tonight, I'll see you as a voting member of the. Oh, and myself, John, I didn't take my own attendance. I am here, so and you will be seated as well as a voting member this evening. Okay. I believe June is on the television there on Zoom. Yeah, I'm not afraid of the point anywhere. Their cameras are over there.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, there you are.
Hello.
I enjoyed your pre-meeting discussion, hearing a little bit about people's preferences for beverages.
Oh, yes.
Are you a fan of sours, too?
Call to order.
We have a free gavel rule when you're out.
Not yet. Review of minutes of October sixth, twenty twenty-two. You should all have the minutes in front of you. Do we have any observations about the minutes? I noted something before the meeting, so I'll note it now, which is that on page three, I believe the beautification committee should probably be capitalized. Insofar as they're an official committee. And that's all that I noticed.
The one thing I noticed is in the paragraph after that, so the bottom of page three. It talks about Josie Joanna Ewing as town clerk. And while she is our town clerk, I don't believe she was here in that capacity. And I think that might be, it might be better to reference her as a Plymouth resident or beautification with a capital B, committee capital C number.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other corrections? Clarifications?
I'm going to approve the minutes that are recommended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstentions. So Neil abstains. All right, so the minutes of October sixth are approved. All right. Have there been communications received by the board?
Yeah, there've been a couple of pieces of correspondence. There've been a couple of surveyed plans with no action required that have been provided. And I can, I don't have the lot numbers in front of me, but there are no, you know, no adjustment, no site plan, just, you know, the town being included on that for the RSA.
All right. So that's all for the communications then, yeah?
Yeah, unless there's anything, June, that I I've missed here.
I think we've got a couple of other things that we'll cover later on in the agenda. So let's just deal with it, maybe from talking about applications that haven't been approved but aren't under development yet and the next item on the agenda too.
Of course, yeah. Which brings us to the next item on the agenda, public hearings and new business. Long-term updates. We have HOP and SWOMP. I love these acronyms, so.
Oh, SWOMP, it is SWOMP.
So we. So up first is the Invest six oh three HOP grant. And there has been an update on the HOP grant. And would you like to speak to that, Joseph, or?
Sure, yeah. So just a little bit of background, you know, we spoke about this some months ago. And then obviously, following up from that, we submitted an application to the Invest six oh three HOP grant, Housing Opportunities Planning Grant, I believe. This is part of the Invest six oh three suite of grant programs, part of what was once known as the Governor's Housing Plan. You know, it's variety of different grants, but we pursued the Housing Opportunities Program Grant, which is no match required, and it allows communities to do essentially three things. Do a needs analysis, sort of a housing study, do a regulatory audit, so comparing the regulations against what the housing study puts forward for data. And then phase three, if there are any needed changes that are, you know, come out of that process, it would be development of those changes, preparing them, you know, through whatever the appropriate process is there. So as we discussed, we did apply for all three phases. We were awarded one hundred and thirty-four thousand to bring in a qualified consultant to assist with these. You know, we have a public hearing to formally accept the funds scheduled. Of course, that's that's under the select board's jurisdiction of the formal acceptance. That's going to be the fourteenth of next month at five forty-five, that public hearing. So, you know, all public are, you know, encouraged, welcome to attend if they so choose. And that would be just for the acceptance of funds. So a couple of things, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be a pretty, you know, participatory process. It's going to have a lot of community engagement involved. And I think one of the things that we see as a big next step for discussion, at least, you know, not necessarily to formally decide tonight, but to start thinking about, you know, setting up a steering committee for this project. But, you know, I should note that the members of the steering committee are certainly not the only ones who would have input. You know, a core tenet of this is is public engagement. So throughout the process, at sort of every phase, there's going to be, you know, many opportunities for different types of public engagement, whether it's small groups, big groups, you know, things we haven't even thought of before. They really encourage us to be creative, get to people where they are and bring people in as well. But there, you know, there is also a need for a steering committee to sort of be that liaison between, you know, between this board, between the public and between the consultant. So we, you know, we've got a couple of ideas, people who, you know, we, you know, we encourage board members, but we want the board to sort of think about too, if there are any, you know, groups we should have represented on this, any any individuals, you know, not looking to necessarily formalize a membership list, but in the, you know, in the application, which I believe everyone has a copy of, there's sort of a timeline. So that sort of gives a sense of the, you know, what the different phases are going to entail and how the, you know, how the timeline is going to be playing out. So it's going to be a pretty, we foresee that the steering committee will be pretty busy. It will be a pretty, you know, heavy commitment since this is a pretty, you know, fast process. You know, by comparison, it's going to be, you know, as, you know, in accordance to with the availability of the consultant. But, you know, we think that, you know, having representatives from the planning board is key, having people from the public, having some some members of town staff, possibly, you know, people from major employment, major employers in town, community representatives, possibly realtors, small business, large business, you know, maybe the schools, schools of various schools and the, you know, builders. There's a lot of different groups that you can, that you could pull in and that it would be probably good to hear from. But just for the core group, probably like five to seven people is a good group to keep things on task. And then can always have someone who sort of will be liaising between a larger group and bringing feedback in as well, in addition to the formal public input. So sort of, I guess, to turn that back over, just, you know, something to start thinking about, looking at the different tasks in here and thinking about how this group could be constituted. You know, what, where it's extra important to have, you know, populations, groups represented and how that's going to work. Again, it's, we foresee it being a pretty heavy investment of time probably from the steering committee. But, you know, we, even people who wouldn't be able to to give the level of time for the steering committee would, of course, have several several opportunities to give public, you know, to give input in the process. So I guess that's where I'll, you know, turn it over to the board. If there are any questions or discussion on on these these areas.
Just to add a little bit, and thinking about who might also be on this board. You mentioned the university and schools and such. I mean, as a housing-focused grant, it is important to get people involved who do have a stake in the housing market in Plymouth, including the hospital and the university and just, which is where you were going anyway, just to clarify that a little bit. Not just big employers, but big employers especially who have like a stake in the housing market. Yeah, so I mean, the 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 schedule is all here to peruse right through the summer of twenty twenty-four with a lot of steps to kind of pull us through pretty quickly as you were saying, Joseph. And I guess the things we need to start thinking about pretty quickly are, A, who might be on that committee? And B, once we get going with that very quickly on the timeline, it's November, December of this year, choosing consultants to meet with an interview and ultimately choose by the end of the year. And before they're snatched up by others. So even by the end of the year, but preferably sooner rather than later. Are there any other comments or questions? The process, yeah, Mike?
I would think it'd be nice to get someone like a real estate agent. Richard Gowen has served on committees before. I think he would be.
Because like Tara is the on the board of the Lakes Region Board of Realtors.
Yeah, so either one of them would be great. I don't know a lot of the other ones, but I could ask Richard Gowen. I think I think the landlords in Plymouth, we've heard from a few about housing in the past. I could see if I could get a name for the landlords. And I would think also a representative from the downtown businesses, because I'm looking at the goals here. It seems like you're zeroing in a little bit on Main Street. So I would think representation, I could also. I was very involved with the parking committee and know a number of the business owners. I would love to be on it.
Couple suggestions. You mentioned somebody from the school. I'm actually thinking that it'd be good to get to move from the PTA. Jenny Tebow has been here speaking on other issues and she's fairly involved. She'd probably be a good representative from the school community. Sarah Fialbar is a local resident. She's involved with the co-op. She'd probably be a good representative for local employers. Or good speaking to, you know, the need for housing for local employers other than the college. But yeah, I also had Tara going down as a Realtor.
And at some point, we also need to like say, like, like this, like, reach out to them if they would be interested in being involved. And we have too many people, it also might be some people would be involved for outreach and other people on the core committee as well, depending on how many people are interested.
Yeah. And there's certainly people from the college that may be involved as well.
And ultimately, right, that we do have a certain focus in here that what we're looking for. And what we also, it's an open process in some ways as well, that a study is going to be done. And we might learn things that, you know, we didn't know in writing the application. That's kind of the whole point. And we'll, we do have a focus and like, as we wrote it out, in things that are on our mind that we're looking for. And at the same time, we might learn new things that might kind of shift our attention a little bit. And ultimately, the recommendations that are made, if we get to that stage, assuming we do, are, just to, you know, reiterate this, I think we talked about this previously, non-binding. And it would have to go through, you know, the town like any other zoning amendments or anything else that would be made typically.
It's probably not too much unlike the Teddy Mountain Highway corridor study that was done years ago. And it's always nice to get more input and get the feelings of the residents and business owners.
Which is a hard process to get an inclusive group of residents together. And that's one of the things we really hope to have facilitated by consultants and others who can help do some of that outreach.
So I just, I had no clue a hundred and thirty thousand dollars could be spent on something like this. It's a lot of money and so. I would love to see the hundred and thirty thousand dollars go into other things for the town, but this is what we got it for.
You mean something tangible?
Yeah, something tangible rather than a group of papers.
Right. But you have to allocate it to this, so, right? If you get the money, it's going to be directly put to this.
Can I just jump? Sorry.
June, yes.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt. It's hard on someone doing that, but I think you've got a good, good list of some suggested people that perhaps Joseph and myself can work on reaching out to. I also was thinking I could share my screen here and go through the task list, just in case anybody's watching at home. They might want to see what this is about, so why don't I do that? Is that all right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I've got it right here. So I think one of the key parts of this is just for anybody that, you know, we we think, I think at this point, thinking of sort of groups, you know, of people that are, that we'd like to have representation from like off-campus landlords, perhaps, you know, major employers, as you said, like Realtor is a great suggestion, et cetera, et cetera. But they really do need to commit some time to this because one of the key things about this funding, because I believe this pot of money, which kind of goes to Mike's comment of it's a lot, it is a lot of money, but it's also got a pretty fast track to it. And I think this was some COVID relief money that somehow got repurposed to help address housing issues in New Hampshire. So I'll be looking at the very bottom here. Basically, everything has to be completed with all the closeout by July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So in building this task and timeline, one thing that we did and also sort of the budget was trying to break it down with the idea of, you know, we have opportunities only at town meeting to make any amendment changes. So if we have to finish by July twenty-four, then we have to be targeting March twenty-four's town meeting. So that really is just a year and quarter away, believe it or not, you know, roughly. By the time we actually get through the first task of hiring a consultant and getting somebody on board. So they basically just have, you know, fifteen months or so to do all of this. We might end up trying to work with two consultants. I was looking at the list the other day. So, you know, a big, the way the money broke down for this, there was only a certain amount you could do for the needs analysis, up to twenty-five thousand, and then I think it was fifty for the audit and then more for the. I didn't necessarily agree with the amount, the way they broke down the limits of what you could apply for, but that's what we had to work with. I think the housing needs analysis would be a really important part of this. And that has to happen first, as we understand housing supply, economy, you know. I think that if we have the right consultant that can really dig into some Plymouth-specific data would help because we are somewhat unique because of the off-campus housing. There's a requirement that people have to, if they're going to be on the committee, you have to go to this housing or at least a couple of people, I think, have to go to the housing academy. Any volunteer can get two hundred and fifty dollar stipend for that. I believe it's a day down at UNH probably. We'll learn more about that, but we put in some, you know, that was a allowed expense. Actually, twenty-five hundred dollars because the award automatically goes to UNH Cooperative Extension for them to run that academy, because that was sort of a requirement in the budget. So the rest of it kind of breaks down as, you know, over, so really through spring, summer of twenty twenty-three, we'll be kind of getting going on certain parts of it. But I also felt like we could just start the regulatory audit at sort of at the same time, you know. So that's why we have sort of the timeline kind of matching, running some overlap with it. And then certainly engagement, having a lot of different types of surveys or interviews or public forums to understand what people think about housing, what their perceptions are, what their opinions are. Because if we don't understand that, then we can't understand, it's going to be hard to build any changes or really understand what the issues are. So I think that's something that's going to have to be a pretty heavy piece. And then a real, you know, kind of communication plan through the summer, late summer, fall to work on, if we're going to do any regulatory changes, how do we want to help, get some help in getting people to understand what those are? So I think looking at the task list and sharing that with any potential volunteers for the committee would be really important because it's going to be a pretty big commitment. I would see the committee meeting a couple of times a month, which on top of planning board meetings and, you know, everything else, if it can be, who can give that kind of time and carve out of their day? So, but we can work on that, given the suggestions that you, that have been made tonight. Any comments or questions about the tasks and timeline? If we really look at this, this helps kind of explain, I think, what what the goals are and what the, what we're trying to get done.
I actually have a question about the timeline. And you mentioned like a year and a quarter, realistically, if we want to get things before voters and actually have the public outreach in place from this grant for that process. Presumably, if there are things that are requested and that might fall between the cracks, we could still put them up another year for a vote. We just wouldn't have the help to do that with the staff involved in this grant.
Right. Because you have to have it completed by, you know, any final reports and all the accounting by the end of July of twenty twenty-four. So that's why we were sort of targeting, you know, the town meeting time of March twenty twenty-four. But yes, if there, if things needed to have additional work, they certainly could go to town meeting on March twenty twenty-five. There's certainly no reason why it couldn't. It just would be, we wouldn't have the consultant necessary to help with it.
Yeah. Is there money to go towards an economist to? I mean, the board suggested that it was a good idea to possibly go forward with an economist to look at how housing could affect the property taxes in Plymouth. So I see the hundred and thirty thousand. I don't know whether some of it could be allocated for this economist study that someone offered to do to expand the work that they've already done.
I think this is supposed to be, oh, go ahead, June.
Yeah, that's a good question. We are tied to selecting a consultant that's on a pre-qualified list that the state and plan New Hampshire developed. So there's some larger kind of consulting firms, there's some very small planning firms, you know, consultants of Office of One. You know, so I think in that first, really the next couple of months, trying to quickly narrow down some, what is the depth of the organizations of these consultants and then picking one or two to work with. So I don't know if there'd be an economist or if one of the consultants might sub out to it, an economist to help with that needs analysis, but we are tied to picking somebody from the pre-qualified list. That's sort of a condition of this.
And if it did, oh, if it did go to an additional economist or someone else, we wouldn't decide that right now. As the process starts to unfold and we choose a consultant, those conversations would happen going forward and seeing who that might be if we decided to go that way, once the process starts to move forward.
And I think the questions you might have, Mike, are not necess, they don't require an economist to answer them. I think the idea is we're finding a consultant that's qualified to deal with the issues that we have at hand, and that that's one of them.
Because I think most people in the town, if you were asked the one concern, housing, they'd say, yeah, housing goes along with property taxes and the taxes that we're paying. And that needs to be a huge, for goals, I don't see it on there, but that's the, that's the goal that most people want. Our our taxes have to be reasonable and they're very high right now.
I mean, one of the things that is in the application, and I'm not sure if the taxes were mentioned by name, is to put housing issues in a broader context, which is quite complicated to do. You have multiple factors in the housing market plus that broader context. And that's a lot to juggle and deal with, which is where a professional consultant can really, really, really helpful. And so we do want to put it in that broader context, which includes taxes, among other things. And obviously, you know, a lot of taxpayers are concerned and.
I mean, you see second-floor housing, it's a goal, but, you know, nothing about, nothing about property taxes. It's just kind of interesting.
I mean.
So Mike, we do have, as one of the, you know, as part of the needs analysis, is this summary of public perception about housing issues. So that's, and it can only fit so much on one of these one-page sheets, but that really, the goal of that statement that I've got highlighted here about, you know, what is, what is that broad range of issues? I mean, I'm sure taxes taxes will come out as one of those, but there may be others too.
Yeah, second-floor housing.
Yeah. And then down here, you know, community engagement throughout the project is looking a lot at that kind of aspect of, you know, surveys, interviews, what do, what do people think? And what, you know, what are, what are the challenges that different sectors, like employers? I mean, they may not be as concerned about taxes, but they're just don't have a workforce that can find affordable housing. And that impacts their bottom line, is their, you know, whatever. So I think, you know, what you're saying will be in there, but we shouldn't just, we need to make sure we're getting, you know, just a somehow gathering input that the consultant will help us with to gain all range of issues input that the consultant will help us with to gain all range of issues that people see. And then, you know, kind of figuring out which ones are the highest priority and on and on. I mean, the other areas that, you know, barriers to the, the cost of development of housing and this, whoops, you know, this one here, that's another one that's kind of related to taxes. When the cost of housing's high and the assessments go up for, you know, newer construction, then that's also an issue for, for housing. So it's can be a deterrent. And then all the site costs, especially for a new subdivision and road development, that kind of thing. So I think there's many, many issues tied to sort of the financial part of it. But hopefully that's what that, you know, kind of assessment of our economy, our population and our housing will, will help bring all that out.
Thank you.
Can I just say too, you know, $134,000 is a lot of money, but that is kind of the cost of developing good regulatory structure. And I think we've, we've been working hard to, in our own zoning ordinance, but we're really limited by the amount of time and capacity that we have here between our volunteers and our paid staff. So to me, this is a huge opportunity to dig into some of our regulatory structure and see how it's best serving us. So, you know, it's not just about us sort of nitpicking through the zoning ordinance about, it's about making that time for public engagement and communicating about those public engagement events that we just don't as a board and our staff just don't have the time to do. So I, I think this is a huge opportunity.
There's a lot of time there. If you really want to do public engagement correctly to reach to people who might not show up for meetings ordinarily, and how do you actually bring them in? And that's a time-consuming process. And having a professional who's, who knows how to do that and manage that well will be a wonderful thing.
Not to mention facilitating public engagement meetings so that, you know, voices are heard in, in a really positive and constructive way, so.
I think people too are more willing to come to a public forum like that and speak up as opposed to coming here and maybe being the only one. So I think we'll find a lot of information from people, what they're really looking for, what they do and don't like. But taxes, you're right, is high on the list. But there's a lot of others too.
Taxes is one part of, of general affordability.
Many things.
You know, if, if you're, if you're rolling up and looking at your housing expenditures as a package, taxes are a part of it. Most of us have mortgages, which are a bigger part of it. But, so, I mean.
Taxes don't go away.
They're my, I don't foresee not having a mortgage in my lifetime.
No, you'll do better than that.
So in, in terms of timeline, so this is our second meeting of October, and November and December is a quick process for choosing an available and qualified consultant. So we should, are we, do we envision having our committee together for that process? I assume so. In which case, or is that going to be a smaller, like, subcommittee that's going to make that determination of the consultant? Because this, we have to decide who's going to be doing that pretty quickly.
Might be easiest to start with the staff and, you know, a couple of planning board representatives and then start to build the community, the committee from there.
Concurrently with the.
The consultant selection.
Consultant selection, yeah.
I would like to definitely be involved with that. I'm familiar with a couple of names on here already. I'd like to do some research. And I know we got burned by Burnt Rock a number of years ago, 15, 16 years ago. And I don't know the names of those people, whether they're on here or not. They were from Vermont. I don't know where they are now. But definitely want to see the town get, get what they're paying for.
The town's not paying for any of this. It's all coming from the grant.
This is all grant money.
All grant money. There's no badge.
That's a, that's a positive.
Town's not paying, yeah.
The town has a working relationship with the Lakes Region Planning Commission, and that might be a good place to consider.
June, what are your thoughts? Does Lakes Region Planning have bandwidth to tackle something like this in your experience?
Um, I know they've gone through a couple of changes recently in staffing, so I would want to look at that and, and talk to them. I think there's some other consultants starting, you know, I've looked at a little bit on the list that have some different skill sets perhaps. So I think we need to come up with sort of a desired list and certainly, in my opinion, somebody that can really do some of that kind of financial sort of assessment, business assessment that, you know, maybe that kind of economic kind of area is one part of it. We need somebody that has a planning background that can understand the regulatory side. And then we also need somebody that, or a consultant that can work perhaps with a subconsultant on a good communication plan. You know, I would worry that a, some of the consultants I've looked at already, if it's a staff of one, what's the, I mean, their capacity to really do a lot and how diverse is that one person's skill set? So I think we've got to dig into the consultant list and add, you know, come up with sort of some, some things and have some interviews with them to, to figure out what will make this really work best for us. Because it's got a lot of components. There is one consultant, I think, that may have a little bit of some engineering kind of component, which could really help on our subdivision regulation side, might look at, another piece you, we haven't mentioned that I was thinking in writing, working on some of the application materials, was what is our infrastructure? You know, we have some real limitations on growth in terms of not having many areas available right in town to build where there's water and sewer, the capacity to extend services, new roads, whatever. I mean, it's a, it's something to think about, given the road construction needs that we have in our current roads. You know, something I'll update you on a little bit later. When you have a private road that, we have a couple of private roads that are, the developers are asking the town to take them over, you know, so we're going to, you know, long-term kind of how does that infrastructure cost get built into strengthening our regulations to have better guidelines for managing a potential new large subdivision with a new roadway? So something to think about. So those are really different skill sets, some engineering, some infrastructure kind of analysis, communications, planning, economic. So that's why I feel like it's sort of like some firm, a consulting firm that has some, some staff, a number of people that bring a variety of talents might be a good way to go. And I'm, no, I just, I don't, haven't looked enough at all the websites to figure that part out. But I do know there's some that are, just seem to be, you know, staff of one, and I'm just not sure that's enough for us.
It, it seems like the, even, even with Lakes Region Planning, they, they were short enough on staff that we had trouble getting our final road surface management report from them, didn't we? I mean, wasn't that something you had to kind of push on to get them to, to finalize?
Um, yeah, I think there were several reasons why that happened. It wasn't totally their fault, but yeah, there was, you know. Yeah, G I S skills will probably be some other, some nice maps of, you know, where is, where's our infrastructure with water and sewer? Where's our developable land? What, you know, where, what's, where is our multifamily housing? I mean, somebody that can take a database of assessing records and make that, kind of mapping it out of like, where are all the houses built prior to, or, you know, or post 1980, or, you know, kind of an age structure of housing? Because older housing tends to be, you know, needing repairs and that kind of thing. So when you look at that needs analysis and that sort of assessment of housing stock, you're going to need somebody that can really grab assessing data, maybe make it into some kind of map. You know, we'll see. So that's why I'm just saying, I think that we need to look at this task list and kind of think of the skill sets that we're looking for, that how, how are they going to build that?
So are we limited to just one firm? Is that what we're saying, or?
That's something that we need to find out because there is, there are several firms that are maybe interested only in the needs analysis part, the first phase. And then there was a couple of them that were only interested in doing phases two and three, the audit and regulatory. So, but to work with multiple firms?
You don't have that continuity. Yeah, you don't have a continuity there necessarily. So you have to coordinate the, the passover, the handovers and stuff, yeah.
Right. I'd rather it be a lot smoother to let them team up and, you know, have one lead and say, oh, we're going to work as a sub on this one, with this one or something like that.
I'm just thinking, if we run into a challenge on any one of them being lack of full staffing skill set, right, that may be an option that we have to look at unfortunately, right? It's just perhaps a reality.
I agree.
But then it gets, then it gets into you have to coordinate the, the gaps.
So I think the next step is for, you know, I think Rebecca had a good suggestion, it was Rebecca or John, that said, you know, maybe if a couple of planning board members would be willing to spend a few hours with Joseph and myself, go through the consultants, you know, think about this skill set kind of thing, set up some interviews with them, maybe, you know, three or four of them to kind of get a sense of, you know, and as, as we work on building a bigger committee for this too, so.
Do you guys have a sense?
And the other thing I didn't, I wanted also say, we should have said in the very beginning, also a big thank you to Joseph for really staying on top and keeping an eye on the timeline and the requirements and taking a first, you know, really good effort and pulling together information for the application and helping to write it. And then John and Rebecca, I want everybody to know that, that they both did quite a bit of editing and helping get this over the finish line too. So.
Kudos, y'all.
Joseph's been sort of taking the lead, so thank you.
Thank you. It's a lot of work.
Nice.
Free money. It's worth going after. So appreciate you guys.
What's the status of this application?
The execution of it.
It's approved.
We didn't have to put in.
We did somewhere.
We have a scheduled public hearing in front of the select board for the 14th. And once the select board gives us the final, you know, approval of acceptance.
It's approved.
Then we have it. Yep. It's already earmarked for us. Yep.
Just wondering, June or Joseph, if you have a sense for how quickly these consultants are getting snagged? I just know that, I mean, I'm sure towns all over the state are, are in a similar position. I think we were, hopefully, we submitted our application relatively early or as soon, as soon as possible for us. But just wondering if you have any sense for, is availability dwindling amongst the pre-approved consultants?
Don't know. Yeah. We'll have to, that was a question I had too, but we haven't had time to figure it out. We basically got this letter yesterday. They meant to send it to us, I think, last week, but for some reason, the person never hit send, so Joseph didn't get it. And then it came to me yesterday. So, so we haven't had, you know, we didn't spend a lot of time looking at consultants until we knew we had it. So we'll, we'll jump right in next week on it, I think.
I would be willing to help out with it.
I'd be willing to remain involved, sort of, really been involved a bit.
I would like to.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I'd volunteer to be on the committee, but I, I'm going to be world traveling. So, but you can pull me in, you know, if there's anywhere where I can help out, definitely.
Sounds like you've got four potentially interested board members then. I will not put my hat on their head.
Like you've done your extracurricular board activity for the.
For a little while.
For the year, yeah.
C I P.
Well, this is going to be ongoing too, in that, you know, there may be others. My availability is less than when it was this summer as well.
Would having a committee put together, or at least a subcommittee, my next meeting be too late, do you think? Or should, should we resolve this, this evening in terms of who from the planning board might start to be on this process to choose the consultant? I guess, everything we've been saying is the sooner the better. We have a few people who are willing to be part of that process.
Do you think you guys, the interested folks can meet and just really set aside some idea of commitment and see, you know, how much folks are willing to give and maybe just go from there instead of determining that tonight? Does that, does that make sense?
That makes sense. Okay.
Are you interested, John?
I am, yeah.
So we got me, you and Sue.
Okay.
Rebecca, did you say you were as well?
I'm, oh, no, I'm interested but don't have the time. So, yeah, so I'm happy to sit this one out.
And I, and I'm volunteering. If you guys need like extra hand on specific tasks, you know, I don't want to be full-time on it because I know I'm not going to be around to meet three times a week in a lot of cases, so.
So I'll send a message out then to Sue and Mike.
Sounds good. I nominate this, we have three of you to be the subcommittee to select the contractor, if you need a nomination.
I didn't know that we do.
Okay, then go.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
And thank you, Joseph, for helping to put this all together.
Yeah.
So we're going from the hopping to the, the swamping for the stormwater asset management program. Are there any updates related to that? We had a really great in-depth presentation last time.
Yeah, no, definitely, you know, appreciate the, the board hosting the public, you know, the first kickoff public meeting there with the swamp consultant. You know, I guess this is more just a little bit of a follow-up. You know, the next step is that level of service workshop where we're really going to try and, you know, get a, get a stakeholder group together and start to dig into, you know, what is the, the desired level of service and looking at it at a, you know, some ranking methodology and establishing some goals, really getting into the specifics, you know. So that is, we're, we're working to come up with the timing, but I believe we're still looking at the, the 16th. That being said, there's some uncertainty, four o'clock, five o'clock. But we're looking probably most likely still at the 16th. Certainly, you know, continuing to try and reach out to those stakeholders, sort of as we identified, based on the public input and, and everything like that, and the suggestions from, you know, our consultant and from New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. I don't know if there was any, you know, follow-up discussion that the board had about the, the stormwater asset management or, you know, any, any follow-up questions. That's sort of where the process rests right now and sort of a ongoing process of trying to, you know, get, get people involved in that level of service workshop, particularly, you know, the stakeholders we talked about at, at the meeting last two weeks ago.
I don't have any further comments or questions. We had a pretty active conversation last night. All right. Well, thank you, Joseph. So it looks like up next on our agenda are planning board approvals expiring soon. And I believe on that list is Riverside Landing, Raptor City, Dragonfly and Mountain Village. I think, June, you've been in contact with all of these or have been in contact?
Yeah, I'm, it's taken me a little while to get to all this because I had to do some more research. But I have sent via email notices or, you know, just a correspondence to the developer for Riverside Landing Phase Two and the Raptor City Sandwich Shop. It happens to be the same individual, but I did two different emails, just reminding them, sent the notice of decision that I had made some notes on of things that had been accomplished. But basically, but in both cases, those site plan review approvals are expiring at the end of December. So I just wanted, I had sent that to the developer to remind them and to say that, you know, the planning board meeting scheduled for November and December was coming up and let us know what they want to do because they do, by the site plan review regulations, need to come back to the planning board and there has to be a public hearing and they have to pay for the notification for that hearing. So we need to get that scheduled and meet the notification deadlines and that kind of thing. So we're hoping that either in November, third week in November or December, that they would be back asking for a one-year extension. And then on same thing for the storage units on Highland Street for Dragonfly Company there that had, they are also expire end of December. So I had roughly the same, same email. I did get an email back for the developer for Riverside Landing and Raptor City just acknowledging that they received my email and said, thank you for letting me know, but no, no further correspondence saying yet what they want to do. I have not heard anything from Dragonfly, although I did just send that one yesterday. In addition, Mountain Village Charter School, they have, as I, I think under a few times under correspondence, have kind of given you some updates. They have emailed me a few weeks ago with an update, and I went back and forth, but I, sort of waiting to see what happened there. They have done some logging, clearing the trees for part of the site. They recently did pull some stumps and piled them up and have a piece of heavy equipment sitting on the site, but no active work. And I do not believe there's any silt fencing in place or any erosion controls. So that has me a little worried about that, but basically, it's not really any earthwork or utilities being put in, that kind of thing. So their approval from the planning board actually expired. They already got a one-year extension and that was granted last October. And per the regulations, it's only, you can only get an extension for one year. And then there's, so, you know, in essence, I mean, the planning board could waive their own regulations and decide to give another extension, I suppose. I wouldn't recommend that. And largely in part, their special exception from the zoning board will expire in first week in December, I think it is. So they also have already had one-year extension and that's all that's allowed by the zoning ordinance and the zoning board can't do anything to waive any requirements of the zoning ordinance. So they have to come back and apply for another special exception. And my suggestion, given the, I don't think that they really have a full, complete site plan yet. They were also supposed to come back with sort of more specifics about the building and the pedestrian circulation. We haven't seen that. So my suggestion would be that, you know, if they decide to come back to the board, we'd want to see a more complete, detailed plan that has, you know, stormwater controls, erosion control plan, a real engineered plan. This is a big enough facility, close to the Baker River, you know, traffic concerns, that kind of thing, that I think would be good to have a, you know, consistent with other developments that we've seen in the last couple of years, have the same level of detail in their plans would be good. So I have not heard anything back, but again, it's only been a few days since I sent the letter to them too, so sure will be hearing. Midstate Community Development for the Child Care Center on Tenny Mountain Highway, they did open up in August. They do have an outstanding issue related to the well. That's a knot on their property. This came up during the site plan time and they kind of, anyway, they have to work with DES. I think they had six months from this, from August or so to create a protection, well-protection easement around the well because it's now a public water supply. So, but that's really between Midstate and DES for them to ensure that they meet DES's regulations for protecting their water supply as a public, in accordance with what DES requires for that. And that might be a little bit of a challenge because the well isn't actually on their property, so they don't, they need to have a protective easement around it. In addition, now that it's been built, we did take a look at the site and, do you remember, they originally had the dumpster in one place and then they were supposed to move it on the plan, which they did, and then the final plan that was approved had the dumpster more over by the playground area to help preserve parking. And when they built it, they just put the dumpster where they wanted, back on the edge of the parking lot. So we have written to them to inform them that they need to move that. And my guess is that's gonna be a little bit of a challenge to get compliance with that, but we'll see what we can do. All right. Aroma Joe's obviously has been up and running. They did get the guardrail finished and I need to finish closing out that one, returning, can't, you know, we're closing their letter of credit for the site development and returning, I believe, I was waiting for last final bill from, about construction inspection regarding the plantings and guardrail that Mike Vignali had inspected. So once I know that I've got all the bills on that, we'll be, will be good. Lakes Region Mental Health Center, you've probably seen on Highland Street, they've been digging away and they ran into some ledge, so there were some changes kind of made in the field with Mike Vignali's approval on some of the catch basins in the upper part because they hit ledge, but that got taken care of. They were paving a couple of days ago, so, so that's getting, they've moved pretty well on that once they were able to get going on it, so that looks good. And Mike Vignali has been visiting that site to inspect it for the town. Midstate, again, for the medical office downtown, heard some rumors that they want to get going on the construction of that, but there have been no, we've reached out to them, I think, once or twice, but they have not done anything on documenting the easement for the Ghul Terrace area. So we'll figure that out as they look to get started on their construction soon, is my understanding, but. Any questions?
Thank you for all the detail and keeping on top of all this. We expect to probably be in communication with some of these individuals in the months to come, hopefully. All right.
Actually, I have one question on, like, how does this work with, like, we're talking through projects that are new, right? But they basically are going through phases. So the neighborhood I live in, there's actually some punch list stuff going on to finish up a project that was built, developed many years ago, right? So how does, is that a gray area in terms of who's overseeing that is, I guess, my question? I mean, maybe this isn't a planning question, but like it's, they're sort of finishing up what they were supposed to do originally.
Is that road construction?
Yeah, so finishing road, putting in some guardrails that were required. They went in this week, a bunch of stuff.
So, I was actually gonna try to cover that under other business because Joseph and I and Scott Whedon and Joe Fagnett from Highway have put a fair amount of time into that. But I must have just, since you asked, I can give you the update right now. So the developer for that area, there was a three-phase, three phases of subdivision applications from about 20 years ago. So the developer, Jeff Hiltz, contacted the town in September and submitted a formal request to have the town take over and accept Chatteran Lane, Point of View Drive, and Ski Lift Road, those three roads. You know, given the amount of buildout out there and, you know, it is expected that at some point those would become public roads. The town actually has like a 20-year-old road acceptance policy that's pretty good. So the first step was that, we had actually met with Jeff, Joseph and I did, and gave him the policy. So then he did the formal request to the select board. And then he did put some money up and we have an escrow. And this is, this is where, it isn't really a planning thing because it's a acceptance, which is the select board's policy, but we are involved in it. So we got an estimate from the towns engineer, Mike Vignali from KV Partners. And we got the money to pay, Mike, and that's being held in escrow. So we got all that started and then there was a site visit, I think it was just last week. I can't remember what day, but Mike was there, Joe from Highway, Joseph and myself, Scott Whedon from, as a building inspector, and we did, we spent several hours, luckily it was a beautiful day, walked up and down the road, tried to figure out what the, you know, so the towns engineer really does an inspection and comes up with a list of deficiencies. So there was guardrail that was never installed. There's some cracks that need to be addressed, some paving. We discussed some issues where the road wasn't built according to the plan. There's the fire system up by the mailboxes, shows it on the plans, it shows it in a completely different location. So Mike just today finished his memo to, for the select board to consider road deficiencies, so that needs to be passed on to Mr. Hiltz. And I just finished our memo from the planning side of a review of some of the files, which have been very unorganized at best, but we've kind of tried to put it together in chronological order, scanned in a bunch of stuff. And so I've written a memo as of today, given that to the select board and town manager, for them to consider the next steps of some issues to work out. I think there will, needs to be an as-built plan that will need to come back to the planning board for some approval at some point to address changes that were made, for whatever reasons, during construction, you know, 15, 20 years ago. The bottom line on this is that if you read our subdivision regulations, I believe it's about three years that a project, projects like this should be built over, you know, a defined period of time. And for a whole lot of reasons or unknown reasons, the developer was allowed to continue for a long time. So I think the, the issues that we're seeing, just because 20-plus years have gone by, are complex and hard to trace back, but we're doing the best we can with it and try, you know, certainly want to work with Mr. Hiltz. It's not, we're not trying to raise problems, but where the town is under no obligation to accept a road that isn't meet good town standards. So we have the engineer making those kinds of assessments and then there's a few legal and other kinds of issues that will work out. It'll take a little bit of time. So we're, that's, that's why you've been seeing us out there and I know that they were gonna be working on the guardrail this week, so I did, I guess, I think Mike, yesterday, looked at the guardrail installation, so we are keeping an eye on it, so please know that.
June, if I can make a comment, I think the work you've done in terms of working with the town engineer to calculate sureties, you know, financial securities for bond, you know, bond amounts for new construction projects, that should address future road construction projects and that, you know, we shouldn't be releasing bonds on roads until they're complete as proposed, right? So, you know, if there's, if we've got, you know, a $500,000 bond on a road construction project that the developer wants to be released, it has to be built to the spec that was submitted and he's probably not gonna drag his feet for 20 years on something like that. He's got that kind of money setting, you know, that kind of surety hanging out that he's gotta pay service on, so. That's, you know, I think it's important.
Yeah, there was a bond.
It is important.
Yeah, the town did have a bond for one of the phases. I don't have all the files and I know, and some of it's hard to figure out. At one point, there was notes of a planning board meeting where the bond amount was reduced, but it may have been town administrator of the past that released the bond. I don't know why the bond got released or if it just, they stopped paying on it and we never knew that. There's not a good paper trail, you know, paper trail on that. So we did have a bond and I don't know if we still do.
We still do.
I can't find it. We do, what we did was a letter of credit for one of the phases that I've actually, you know, called the bank that issued it. The bank was sold to another bank and I finally wrote to some, I don't know, vice president and said, "Hey, what's up with this?" And they wrote back saying, "It's expired" because when a letter of credit, they can sometimes, depending how it's worded, they can have them lapse with, and with the sale of the bank, somehow it got lost that, or missed that, you know, this was there. And the bank didn't reach out to try to maintain that letter of credit on behalf of the town because it wasn't in their interest to do that.
My point is that, you know, there is a process for ensuring that contractors finish roads when they're part of a subdivision proposal and that, you know, the bonding process should, as long as it's enforced adequately and inspections are done by the town engineer, it shouldn't be an issue.
And if they're paying a bond premium every year, they know the bond's there, they know the road's not done because it hasn't been released.
Right. I mean, in an ideal world, when, you know, if they're dragging their feet thinking they're gonna get away without doing things and hoping the bond will be released, you know, that's, that's one thing, but we shouldn't be setting that precedent or creating that expectation for developers.
I think it's also really helpful just to see all ends of this process from the stuff we were just talking about with all the current projects that are open to something that's actually still open but decades old.
Yeah.
You know, you look at some of these things, you're like, "Oh, it's a big deal, another, you know, extending this another year, another year," but then we see something, not to point at you, it's not. But the situation you're talking about, you can see why we need to have everything in such tight order with responsibility on the developer to make sure these things are happening to certain standards, so.
Incentives have to be right. Yeah.
I'm glad to see the town.
And the other problem with it, even, sorry, even if we had had a, still had the letter of credit, you know, from whatever the amount was, $80,000 or something, you know, 15 years ago, that would have gotten you a lot more road construction than it does now. So that's the other problem with even a bond that was 15, 20 years old, it's not gonna get you very far today.
Good old inflation. I was just gonna say, good old inflation.
I just wanted to add, I'm glad the town is going forward with this and
Yeah.
I think it's something that the residents of that community are really looking forward to.
Yeah, we're eager. We're ready.
Didn't the town vote to accept a private road?
That was the one up on.
Martin Estates?
Yep. They did that.
Has that been accepted?
I believe it was.
I think there's some deficiencies.
So my, I.
No, sorry, sorry to interrupt. I can give you the update on that one too. That went to town meeting.
So even if there are deficiencies, the vote of the town meeting is final, like, that's not up to selectmen. Like, the town meeting is the body that approves those things. The selectmen don't get to say no when the town meeting says yes. Like, even if there are deficiencies, that's not, we can't say no to that.
So what happened was, and I don't have all the details in front of me, but how it was originally presented as a petition, I believe, to have Martin Estates' road taken over.
Right.
When it ended up at town meeting, there had been some discussion and the, people weren't aware of the 20-plus-year-old road acceptance policy, so when that was pulled out, it was agreed that that was what was gonna be followed and it was not a vote of the town at town meeting to actually accept the road. It was, I believe, I don't remember how it was worded or the exact sequence of things, but what has happened there is it's going through the same process and the developer put up money, we have it in escrow, KV Partners have been looking at it. They've been doing work and they just took some pouring of the road this week or something, so. I haven't been as close to that one, but that one's probably very close to getting a letter from the towns engineer saying that all the work that was required has been done. There was some drainage work too and cleaning out some ditches or something. Again, I'd have to go back to the memo and, from Mike, and look at it, but developer's been working on that and I think the final paving was being done soon, so the town would then, the select board would then have to take that over, but we also need to get a deed for the road. So then there's a legal review that has to happen to make sure that, you know, the deed matches the plan that's at the registry. But they do all the engineering and construction work and then work on the deed, so the town has not taken that over yet.
Interesting. Okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I thought it was all settled three, four years ago when the petition was going around, so.
So I do have one more last question around Chatteran's work. Is there, you said the engineer has done, you guys did a walkthrough and there's probably a punch list or something, right, with details? Is that something that's gonna get published out that, you know, the public can see?
Sure. I mean, basically, everything we do is public information, so. It just came today, so, you know, to be honest, I've looked it over not too closely, but, and I've sent it on to the select board town manager, so, you know, I think we can, we can help, I can send that to you, Guy, if you want or anybody else. At some point, I'd rather have it come through the town manager, I think, but we can get that to you.
Okay. Yeah, appreciate that.
Or come in and look at it.
Yeah, I just kind of want to shadow what the, look at the work and see where it is and shadow it a little bit.
All right. Thank you very much, June. So next up on the agenda are our zoning amendments and so at this point, at least for these six zoning amendments that we had set out as goals, we seem to have our goals clarified and I think, believe staff is going to be working or has been working on language for how those will look in our ordinance. And so I guess the next thing is to think about, well, there's a few. One is the floodplain issue and the others are, you know, scheduling out our public hearings for the amendments. Before we talk about scheduling, do you want to, Joseph maybe or June, give an update on the floodplain language?
Yeah, sure. I don't, I don't know if June had anything in particular to add, but the, you know, the town's a part of the National Flood Insurance Program. As a result, we have an obligation to keep our regulations sort of up to date as far as the, you know, floodplain development regulations. So Kathy Nelson from the state, who is responsible for such things, has taken a look at the town's zoning ordinance with respect to conformity with the most current standards. So we actually, you know, they also looked at our subdivision and site plan regulations. Fortunately, since we had just updated our site plan regulations, those were all good to go. Site plan, I should say. So that was fine, but they did come back with a few areas that we should update in our zoning ordinance. They sent us this colorful track changes document, as you all have, and, you know, it's a part of the process as they're looking towards adopting new flood maps for the county. So, you know, it's largely just, you know, different. Um, so, you know, it's largely just, um, you know, different terminology, you know. Making sure references are up to date, um, I, I, I don't think it's anything really dramatically different. But it's just bringing our floodplain section into conformity with the new uh, National Flood Insurance Program standards. For uh, you know, floodplain development regulations, mostly just definitions and, and that kind of thing. But you all have the, their, their direct comments in front of you, and, you know, it's a, it's a part of our obligation. Sort of to keep up to date as, as members of the National Flood Insurance Program.
There's not much need or even room for debate necessarily, it's just, these are things we need to do, and.
If we don't, if we don't do this, we fall out of compliance with the flood insurance program, and nobody can insure their homes in their town, so I think we should do this.
Yep. So. Yeah, um.
No, no, I, I mean, I think this is a no-brainer.
No, I, 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 I didn't, I didn't expect there to be much discussion, it's, it seems pretty straightforward. And so I guess we need to start thinking about, it, it's not dire at this point. But like, what our schedule's gonna look like going into the, on December and January in terms of public hearings. So we, we, I think we all have the schedule um, of what we need to do um, by a state law. Petition zoning amendments can start being accepted mid-November, um, they need to be finalized by mid-December. And then. I, I, I'm trying to remember our public hearings, are they usually like one, one in December and one in January? Are they both in January?
I'd say if the, the petition ones don't get, I mean, those can, those have to, they have to be finalized by mid-December.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't, we don't know if we have any petition.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Amendment, so I would say let's just do our, for our two meetings already scheduled in January as our hearings.
Okay.
I just think, I think that fits within the schedule, and that's, that's easy, that's not adding an extra time to us, and that way we're not splitting. I don't know, I find if I split something between December and January, my, my brain might explode, so.
I, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, and we looked at, you know, that as well, we can certainly manage that in terms of the postings and stuff for those, those two meetings. And be within, you know, what they, what they recommend, so it, you know, that, that makes sense.
I think the worst-case scenario, we get walloped with some site plan application for the, but who knows? I mean, we can, we can manage if that's the case.
Yeah. That works for me.
We're not allowed to pull all-nighters.
I know, we have to get out of here at some point. Ten, nine thirty?
Ten, ten, yeah, something like that, it's in the bylaws, I didn't bring my notebook today.
I'm not, I'm not gonna look it up, hopefully that will not come to pass, um.
I mean, we could keep talking about it until we reach that point tonight.
We, we could.
Sure.
We could read every word of our, yeah, so, um. Is there any necess- necessity of clarification from staff as we work on the wording as to our desires and the stuff we decided upon? I think it's pretty straightforward, right?
It all seems pretty clear, uh, we did send a, a sample zoning ordinance, which shows just a, you know, a first crack at how that all might. Fit within the zoning ordinance as it stands, you know, we're, we're sort of in the background, still working on, you know, what warrant text. What the zoning amendment proposal text would look like, but, um, you know, we did provide that draft zoning ordinance to give everyone a feel of. The direction that, you know, hopefully the board was in agreement with, it's what we're doing, I don't know if there's any questions or thoughts about that.
I did have one thought, and I, 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 I'm reticent to even go here, um, because everything's kinda squared away. We had talked about um, rear setbacks in the Village Commercial.
Yeah.
And when we finalized everything last time. Um, and with, I guess, my oversight, we, we didn't return to that conversation. I remember I had some concerns about zero setbacks in the rear possibly causing problems on the budding properties and. Um, are we just gonna kind of leave that as is? I know, we, we didn't talk about it last time, and it was one of the things we had discussed earlier. And I don't wanna have everything finalized and reopen a can of worms, but.
Did we talk about zero rear setbacks? I thought we said minimal, but I thought we still were gonna go with some.
Like five or something.
Well, I mean, you.
What is the current?
And this is just commercial, right?
Yeah, in Village Commercial right now, it's ten-foot rear with zero allowable by special exception, just for the, the background.
I kinda like that.
Okay, yeah, so we're just leaving it as is, and, okay.
Only because like, even when you have two properties backing up to each other, like, if they're both zero, then their exterior walls, but.
Well, that was my concern, but, yeah.
And there's no, no room for service, there's no fire separation.
Windows.
Right, no windows.
Okay, sounds good, I just, I just wanted to clarify, like, I know that was like a loose thread that wasn't fully clarified at our last meeting, but I thought we had clarified everything.
I mean, it's, it's still up for debate if anybody feels differently, but I kinda like the.
I didn't hear any.
Zero by special exception.
Leave, leave it as is, yeah.
I don't really have a problem with that. The only one I was hesitating on was the residential um, fifteen-foot we went with, I think. So, I mean, it kinda makes sense in town, where you're sort of restricted, right? But I'm still debating, does that make sense, you know, like.
In all areas.
Everywhere, and I guess it would, it would cause an issue of you'd have to figure out what your, your separation is, right?
It's only the single-family residential.
Right, but the point is, is that when you get out to like, you know, even my neighborhood or anywhere else, you see a, a house fifteen feet off the road. That kind of changes the, it, it, it could potentially change the, uh, the look and feel of the neighborhood.
But, but in that neighborhood though, like on Ski Lift Lane, where it drops off really quickly, that was one of the places I thought like, reducing it would actually have a. Benefit on the.
It, it would.
Homeowners.
It, it would, but at the same time, what you're doing is you're saying, I'm gonna, I'm gonna help the homeowner, but I'm gonna change the look and feel of the neighborhood. So I don't, I don't know the right answer there.
So I, I just.
I'm just, I'm just like, sort of pawing around it, is, is that the right call, but, yeah.
I think we, as a group, last time, decided that we were gonna go forward with this, and it'll, it'll, it'll come up to open debate.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
And public hearings.
Plenty of other people who.
Yeah.
Kick it around, but.
And then we could talk about that when, when we get there.
Yeah, I totally, I get with economics of, of that, I mean, the fill, the amount of fill that you need to do for. Especially one of the properties that still needs to be done there, it just drops like heavily, um, it would make it cost prohibitive, but, yeah.
All right.
And, and, you know, even in a neighborhood like that, if, you know, if there's, you know, one or two lots that aren't developed, and the other houses are at thirty. Like, the developer is probably gonna put them at thirty, even if it's a fifteen-foot minimum.
Yeah.
In all likelihood.
Well, it's more if someone's, if someone's building for themselves, they may not wanna be that close. A spec build, they may just jam it there.
Well.
Cause that's up to the contractor at that point, right? So that's a, that's more of an economics call on the contractor's part, if he's, if they're doing a buy and spec build and flip. But, yeah.
So, I think for now, we're gonna leave it.
Yeah.
As we all collectively decided last time, and.
It's fine, yeah.
And, and it'll be open for debate again.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we'll have our hearings. Is there other business from members of the board and planning staff?
I have a question.
Neil.
Are there any updates on the second phase of Riverside Landing?
That was part of what we were looking at when we were talking about the outstanding approvals that we're addressing. For Riverside Landing, what I believe is the second phase of that project.
June said she reached out to the developer, but we haven't received anything yet.
Anyone else? Oh, I got a tickle in my throat. Passed a gavel over, no, I think I'm okay. Um, I, I haven't been using enough. Um, okay, um, are there public comments?
I just uh, am looking for feedback, and there was a recommendation or talk about a. Main Street for downtown master plan process. Um, I'm working on the Village Commercial Zone, Main Street, master planning and pulling together. All the data uh, from uh, our existing system. And um, I didn't know if there was still a program idea or a project. Or an interest in continuing that, or if it's gonna be into something else, so.
I mean, I think at this point, we're not quite certain, I think there was a concern that it would be, would be a lot of work to add to our plates. With all the stuff that's already going on. All right. Um, at the same time, I think some of us recognize that it is important to address. Um, it, it just might not be at the top of our agenda at this very moment. Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Are there any public comments on our electronic media?
We did have an attendee that.
We do, yeah, no, no raised hands or unmuting, so.
Okay. So, our public comments are closed, and. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll say it.
Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. And it's seven forty-eight, and our meeting is adjourned.